I now call the meeting to order, please be seated. Good morning. I'd like to welcome government officials and all the deputations to this meeting. We are here to carry on listening to views of the deputations regarding the drop in secondary student population. There was a suggestion yesterday that the Permanent Secretary of the Education Bureau, Mrs. Cherry Che, be invited. So the secretary wrote to the bureau yesterday. The bureau wrote back to us that the Permanent Secretary would be unable to attend today's meeting. So would you please clip on the earpiece? Channel zero is for the floor. Channel one for Cantonese and channel two is for English. Because of the sheer number of deputations, we will have to divide the meeting into two segments. Just a reminder that the submissions and also the oral presentations that you will give will not be protected by the Electrical Powers and Privileges ordinance. I'm inviting the deputations to take it in turn to speak. Each will be allotted three minutes and there will be a buzzer when the time is up and you have to stop speaking when you hear the buzzer. And please make it brief and you have further information, please submit it in writing. Well, the decline in population, student population, will increase the quality of education. Can we relax the time restriction to four minutes? Well, yesterday we didn't quite have enough time for questions. And we had to rush along yesterday. I'd like to devote more time for questions, for some interactive exchanges. And they are welcome to submit their information in writing if they have further information, that is. All right. The first one is Mr. Ko, Chairman, on behalf of the Hong Kong Institute of Education Student Union. We believe that, given the decline in student population, this is a good time for small class teaching and this will improve the student intake. In our submission, we have made it very clear in detail how important small class teaching to Hong Kong's education sector. And this will also resolve the under-enrollment problem. And this will also improve the quality of education. There are not that many studies on small class teaching in secondary schools, but we do have lots of empirical evidence in this regard. According to the Research Centre of the Institute, many adopted open-minded attitude towards small class teaching. Small class teaching is in line with needs and trend. And this is no matter of keeping the teachers' jobs. This will also enhance the quality of education and efficiency. The younger generation standard benefit. The small class teaching will up, improve the quality of education. Liberal studies result in teachers having to do group discussion. This is the way to go. And students can be equipped with independent thinking, critical thinking ability. They can assess and evaluate the situation, taking into account fellow students' views. The pursuit of small class teaching will also improve the professional development of the teachers. Our institute is providing a lot of diploma courses. And it is important to the teachers. The government and the institute should work together and provide training on pedagogy for the teachers. Small class teaching is a good practice. This will enhance the professional ability of the teachers. And students will have better learning environment in a small class setting. Thank you. I'm Mr. Liu, Lucy Ming. Chairman, I speak on behalf of the Hong Kong Federation of Students. We support small class teaching, but in terms of actual implementation, I've got a couple of points for the secretary and members. Small class teaching is not really there to address a decline in student population or to forestall school closure. Small class teaching will bring education in Hong Kong to a new dimension. We cannot be stuck with the one-way kind of teaching. Over the years, the teachers and schools have changed their pedagogy over the years. But if we can have more discussions, if we can consolidate and internalize the knowledge, then small class teaching is the way to go because there would be that much more involvement and they would be closely involved in the classes. And that would just end up great their teaching, their learning. Small class teaching will enable teachers to give students more individual attention. We also know for a fact that the integrated teaching has been going on for so long. In order to make it better, small class teaching is one of the way, one of the most important means. In terms of resources, many schools are worried that if small class teaching is brought in, then there would be less subsidy for schools. But I must emphasize that, given the decline in student population, the Education Bureau and the government alike should have more resources for schools to improve their school-based resources, like the school environment and the resources available for learning. And that way, the different schools can enhance the quality of education. Many parents are concerned that with small class teaching, parents are concerned about the, that the opportunities for them to go into band-one schools would be reduced. But I must emphasize that, given more resources available, each school can upgrade their quality of education. So the entry into a particular school is not a hallmark of success. Rather, we have more resources devoted to the students to achieve all-round development. This is a really objective that we have to strive for. So on behalf of the Hong Kong Federation of Students, I'd like to stress again that small class teaching should be supported. And without reducing the resources, that there would should be more resources available to schools. All right, let's move on to Long STFA, Long Kow Kui College. Mr. Tai. Chairman, I must make a declaration. I come from Chin Wun, the hardest-hit area. We don't have any problems with enrollment, but I don't think we should look at the situation in isolation. I mean, I was unable to sleep last night. I was worried about today's meeting. I think we have demonstrated our unity, our solidarity. We come out and stand up for ourselves in this particular situation. All the views expressed are really eminently good. I've got a request here. I hope that the administration should not distort the aspirations of the teachers. The thirty student class size would improve the quality of education if we can seize this opportunity of a decline in population before 2017, without any additional resources. If we can pursue a medium-sized class teaching, then we can restore, later on, we can restore the level that we are at today. The headliner suggested that small class teaching should not be the way to deal with the decline in student population. And we should build more schools and this would bring pressure to bear on the scarcity of land. And this is not a truthful report of what we said. At the early stage of Chin Wun development, we didn't have any complaint about eight classes for each school. But our second request is that the, in the paper, the administration said that the number will come down by seventeen percent, eleven thousand and fifty-four divided by thirty-four. And this formula is wrong. According to our calculation, and this is not a right conclusion, in Chin Wun, there were nine schools that have seen a reduction to three classes. If a reduction of two hundred sixteen students, they would be coming down to three classes. And any further reduction, they would be down to two classes. My aspiration is that we attach a lot of importance to professional development. The Secondary School, Secondary School Principal Association went to Shandong for a fact-finding visit. There were eleven groups that went to Guangzhou for a duty visit. We hope that the Education Bureau and teachers will work collaboratively together instead of pointing fingers at one another. Right, P O C A Wong Soo Ching, a secondary school.
We're asking for just thirty students in a class. So it's of medium size and not small class. We're just asking to raise the ratio up to one to two point three. Is it too hard? The E D B may say they relax the criteria to start a class. So teaching posts and schools may be kept, so we should be satisfied with that. But I have to say, this cannot solve the problem. We are not just concerned about school closure and shrinking of class numbers. We're also worried about the decrease in teachers and the effect on students. Those schools with high teacher-student ratio, what are we going to do for them? We have an opportunity ahead. How come the E D B is not looking at it? Recently, the E D B has rolled out lots of measures. For example, N S S, School-Based Assessment and Integration Education. Now, we have a growing learning difference in our students. So teachers are having a hard time. Teachers in preparing for lesson, they do not have time to sleep and their health are affected. They may have depression and liver problems. Some teachers have very bad health. How will they have any attention to devote further to education? Who will suffer in the end? Our students. We don't want this to happen to our students anymore. That's why we proposed the three-to-one package. We hope Mr. Ng can seize the opportunity of a four-in-population to try to have medium-class-sized education to create a better future for our students. With Mr. Ng, you sacrificed a high-paid job and you come into this hot kitchen. Next, Mr. Lau Chen Hong. Good morning, Chair and lawmakers. Yesterday, I was here and listening to the deputations. I would like to thank members. It's a hard job sitting here just listening to others. When you go home, everything you think about is class shrinkage and three-to-one package. But why are we here? Because we are committed to education. That's why. Well, I feel sorry for Mr. Ng. I think you have a hard time. You have lots of difficulties ahead. You are like our commander, leading us in this battle. Now, yesterday, two hundred-odd soldiers should in fact be fighting the battle. But how come yesterday they were all out? For those frontline generals, what do they see? The mismatch of resources will become more and more serious. This is happening to my primary school. I was studied in a primary school in a village, but then my parents picked a, an elite school in Kaohsiung District. And those five years in high school was very significant to me because I always came at the end in exam. So I always tell my students about my experience. What I want to say to you, Mr. Ng, is that principals usually do not want to get involved in politics. I thought hard and long about whether I should come out. We don't want to politicize this issue. But then I'm a frontline educator. I do not have any data about small class education. I don't know whether it's good. But then, when I first entered this sector, when I first became a teacher, my teacher already told me my job will affect people. I can see that I, with small class education, my teachers are getting closer to the students. I don't have data to support that, but I welcome you to come to visit my school to see for it. I've been involved in the education sector for a long time. I can write a book about all the hardship a principal goes through. Now, principal, please have confidence in us. We understand that if we do not take care of the frontline work teachers, we will have problems at the back. And vice versa. So, Mr. Ng, if you have any difficulties in resource allocation, we can always sit down and come up with suggestions for you. Please work hard and we believe in you. Next, Madame Feng, Principal. Good morning, Chairman, lawmakers and teachers. Yesterday, the secretary emphasized on keeping teaching posts, schools, as well as our strengths. I have to say, sorry. Other principals and myself come here not to keep the teachers or the schools. What we want to keep is education in Hong Kong, the future of Hong Kong. What I don't want to see is that the education in Hong Kong will be dealt a blow in this generation. We are committed to education, that's why we come out today. The education is only willing to roll out relief measures. That means to relieve, to lower the class size, minimum class size to twenty-six people and to roll out early retirement scheme. But you have to be backed by data and reason. Now, all these measures, what are the rationales behind and what data back it? And how effective are they going to be? Educators and principals have already done lots of analysis. In terms of rationale, the thirty student class will take care of the needs of students and upgrade Hong Kong education. This is proposed by the sector. And we have a high goal with this package. But then the E D B rejected us because of the financial cost. So what's the financial cost? Our estimation is you can only save seven hundred, seven hundred million dollars or more in the coming four years, just to save seventy, seven hundred and seventy million dollars. And you're going to damage the education sector. I don't think it's worth it. If you lower the, you shrink the class size, you are not actually taking care of the one thousand and thirty-two classes. We know these one thousand odd classes will come back in the future. Altogether, we're talking about an effect on over two thousand classes. This is a major earthquake in the high school sector and it will do lots of damage to the sector. School closure, it was wrong. Why? It closed down, it closed down lots of schools. If you're going to roll it out on high school level, then you will repeat the mistake of, you say you want to raise effectiveness and improve on education, learning environment. Are you actually doing this? Next, we have Mr. Cheng from Methodist Li Wei Li College. Educators and Chairman, lawmakers, good morning. This is my second day here at this special meeting. We're glad because yesterday, two hundred-odd principals were here to show our support, to make our voices heard. This is good because we are united. We are brothers and sisters. We support each other. Whereas those in the Education Bureau for Mr. Ng, I'm sure you are committed to talking with us. But I do need, you need, I think you need a team. But then the Permanent Secretary is not here today. And that's the same for various other meetings. When I listened to the deputations in the waiting room, deputations mentioned a gentleman very often, that is your predecessor, Mr. Xue Ming Yang. Did we praise him or criticize him? Well, everybody praised him. Why? The four in student population has been here for several years. What did Mr. Xue do? They discussed with us. He went into the community to talk to the principals, class shrinkage and class size shrinkage. We talked about it. So now, did anyone in the sector criticize Mr. Xue for that? No. We praised him. Another person I have to give commendation is Betty. She sat down with us to discuss for the future of the sector. Now, coming back to what I want to say, the cut-down in class number and class size are effective. What you propose to do is to lower the requirement for opening classes. This is a blanket measure. I don't see how effective, whether it would be effective. When you teach mathematics, we tell students not to use our method to come to the answer. But we tell them the answer. So this is the ideal, this is the philosophy. When student number falls, we have to ask how we can give students confidence to learn. I don't understand why we have to roll out early retirement scheme. It will only lead to mismatch of resources. Next, Mr. Wong. Good morning. History tells us, when you misjudge the situation, it will lead to a long-term detrimental effect. Now, in the epidemic, the government said there was no outbreak, but then SARS, we realized, a doctor realized that there was the SARS outbreak. And on the second of November this year, when people were worried about the four in student population and the related issues, the bureau only tells us this is a transitional period. Now, twenty-odd principals are out to fight for resources for our students. What are we left with? The bureau is going, the bureau going to work with us? Or the bureau is going to make a mistake and it will lead to long-term adverse effect? Education is about cultivation of talents. Today, this sector is there to save people. The director of fire services asked the firemen to save people. But because of the bad requirements, then the firemen cannot do their job. They cannot even save themselves. Now, young people have a lot of problems in learning. If you cannot do anything, even in education, what will be left for, in the future for us? And Hong Kong education system will be a joke in the world. Now, lots of band-three schools will be the first to be hit by the measures. Under the early retirement scheme, experienced teachers are encouraged to leave the sector. In two thousand and three, the sector rolled out the troubled time with the bureau. But what about today? We have a survival mentality, not a mission mentality, as said by Premier Wang Jia Ba, which sees the day. He said it on the very same day, the second of November. Mr. Hong from Notre Dame College. We believe that the government is also anxious as the public. But sometimes you simply rush things. These two days, over two hundred principals are out here to make proposals to the government to solve the problem in hand. Things are in a rush. We don't want to see any opportunities missed so that our students are being affected. We worked together for a fruitful, and had a fruitful result in two thousand and six. So it was an achievement. We are now at the last stage. I don't want to sacrifice the fruitful results we worked out from several years. We are still touching, we are still skating on the edge at present. Mr. Ng said there are possibilities to shrink class size. Now, for small class teaching, of course, you have to do more studies. But if you are to go down that route, I fully believe our proposal, the three-to-one proposal, is, will guarantee a win-win situation. In the future, we can also look at the possibilities of having a small, medium, and big class teaching. You are an expert in human resources. Now, these schools are divided into different bandings because we want to cater to the different education needs of students. What we are left now will remove all the achievements we made over the years because it will lead to growing learning difference. I am sure the bureau will be busy in tackling problems because of the mismatch of schools and students and also unemployment problems because new teachers will be jobless. Now, how long is four years? Serial school closure, three-to-one package, if you adopt it, will show your commitment. And there are also packages to help us ride out the difficult time. I can see lots of education organizations in Hong Kong are working for the disadvantaged people in Hong Kong. But then your measures will lead to closure of these schools. That means you are telling people not to start schools like this in the future. I think the bureau should strike a balance between band-one to three schools. For all these different schools, we are actually trying to cultivate band-one students. Next, Mr. Feng Chi Ke. Chairman and lawmakers, I've already submitted my written proposal. I would like to I would like to comment and to ask questions, to put questions to the bureau. Now, blanket cut is what you say about our package. Why? We are actually proposing flexible adjustment. You want to keep jobs, you want to keep schools and competitiveness, and education quality as well. But lawmakers and parents and educators make it very clear to you, we want to upgrade education. Our expectations of education is actually higher than the bureau. You state that parents oppose very much to our package. But if you want, you are really committed, you have to tell parents chances are not lower. And you have to tell them the detrimental effect of mismatch of students and schools. As for financial cost, how large, how do you come up with that figure? You're talking about one billion dollars. But then I believe the Quality Education Fund amounts to over six billion dollars. If you allocate fund from the fund, I would really support you. When the population rebounds, we propose we can increase the number of allocated students. You met with lots of principals and teachers to come up with review for NSS. Now, I think you have to listen to the education sector, what's the crux of the problem under the new system? The high teacher-student ratio is clear. But then in your documents or what you say is that you doubt the effectiveness of small-class teaching. It's thirty student, a thirty-student class, small-class situation, I don't want to go into details here. Next point, lawmakers, well, you said two minutes. It's just too short for the deputations. That's the same in classroom. We we need to have a few students in a class to give them more time to speak. I have two dreams. I hope for the next administration, we will support Mr. Ng to stay on. Second dream, when we review the education system over the past ten years, I want to look back on the possible achievement you've made this year.
Next, Mr. Cheng Kin Sun from Hong Kong University College. Education is a profession which, you know, focus on the individual, the biggest, greatest asset of a school are the teachers. The education system has been criticized recently, but the teachers are the most loyal, you know, um, uh, part. And they've always done, performed the duties conscientiously. Over the years, we have different types of TOC, MOI, ECA, TSA, SCN, all the NAS and SCN, different, all kinds of initiatives. That has Mr. Ng and the Education Bureau forgotten that it is the teachers who is actually, you know, doing the important task. Our society is becoming more and more complex, we have both parents working, we have the responsibility of educating the children are now placed on the shoulders of the schools. And the school has become the last line of defense. To educate the students, you need a large number of conscientious and hard-working teachers. But the policy objective to keep, retain, save, retain the schools and the teachers. However, you are not reducing the, the class size, while population declines, the number of classes definitely will fall. The establishment in the schools is linked to the number of classes. So my question is, how are we going to retain the teachers? And how are we going to, you know, keep all these experienced teachers who have worked so hard and conscientiously over the years? Is this, I think there's something wrong, is, has, is there something wrong with the objective or the measure of, of the Education Bureau? I know that the government attaches a lot of importance to resources, but I would like to invite you to answer a simple IQ question for primary kids. A cake which would cost a hundred dollars per pang, there are two. And if you have twelve people sharing the same cake for group B, nine people sharing that cake. My question is, which group, what, which group will have the cake which carries a higher value? I understand that the value of the cake is the same. The difference is the number of people sharing that cake. What we are now proposing, that is reducing the number of students per class, we're not proposing to, 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 to have a larger cake, we don't need additional resources. The total amount of resources required remain the same. Except that in the next four years, for each class, we will deploy a little more resources, so that the education sector can improve the quality of education. We must also remember that the, the cake in Hong Kong is not an expensive one. Education takes up only a far smaller percentage of GNP than the more advanced countries. So I'd like the Education Bureau to really consider the three-two-one proposal. Next, we have Mr. Law from the St. Benedict School. Thank you, Chairman, and Mr. Secretary. Today, the education sector would like to take the opportunity of a declining student population for, to, to enhance the quality of education by reducing the class size to thirty students. This is a very pragmatic suggestion. Our rationale are as follows. First of all, over the decades, for our secondary seven and secondary six students, we have a class size of thirty students. We are not asking for a class size of thirty. Many people say that we're not making good use of resources. Does that mean that we've not been allocating resources rationally over the last decade? And we all know that only one-third of the students can go to secondary six and seven. After the school CE examination, only one-third can move on to the sixth form. We're faced with a new curriculum, we teach them on, through classes with a size of thirty. Why is it that we have thirty-eight, forty, forty students for the lower junior levels? So we put forward a very pragmatic proposal to steadily decline the number of students per class. If you work out the sums, it will be by twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, that we're going to have thirty students per class in secondary four. Wouldn't you agree that this is very pragmatic request? And secondly, after launching the new senior secondary curriculum, the, what is the situation confronting our students? A year or so ago, we have noticed, I, I wonder whether the counselors and the bureau have noticed, that the media has been reporting on how the schools prepare the students for the new senior secondary curriculum. Whichever band the school, they have to give up the summer vacation or shortened vacation and to offer supplementary lessons. You can see that the new curriculum has caused a lot of pressure on our students. Let's talk about also the, the general studies, which is compulsory subject. And all students have to take part in a project study. And the teacher, we need to instruct thirty-eight students, or even if divide them into groups who have more than thirty students. When a teacher leads each student to conduct a project study, you can imagine how large the workload is. Don't think that for, the workload for teachers for the junior secondary curriculum is light. We can see that problems, when problems arise, it will be the schools which will be standing at the forefront. For example, a few years ago, we have to set up a committee on a clean school, a campus. And we have to, you know, appoint designated people to do the job. For, we have a support group for special education as well. So if we do not cut down the number of student per class, we certainly will jeopardize the quality of education, Chairman. What I like to, well, I like to tell you about the school where I work. The school where I work is helping the most vulnerable and the most disadvantaged students in Hong Kong, namely, the last, the lost, and the least so-called students. They all belong to the band three group. Many of them come from the bottom ten. I have more than six hundred students in my class, about ten percent of which I have SCN's. In order to help these so-called three L students, our colleagues and our team have put in extra efforts. For example, this year, originally, we have nineteen classes, but we've adopted a medium-to-small class size strategy. We've expanded the nineteen classes to more than twenty, so that each class will have twenty to two to twenty-eight students. Most of the band three students have, are very weak as far as the languages are concerned. So in order to help them with both Chinese and language, Chinese and English languages, at the junior secondary level, we will split up each class into two groups. In order to help students with reading or dyslexia problems, we have designated, we have set up, you know, small groups comprising ten students or less to help them. In order to accommodate these three L students and to enable them to learn more effectively, our teachers are willing to put in more efforts and stay longer at school, in school, and to put in more efforts to help these students. In order, if we were to implement the bureau's proposal, these vulnerable schools, even if they will not immediately be eliminated, however, we will sooner or later be wiped out. At which time, the, the experienced teachers will have to leave, and those who stay behind will be working, you know, without any sense of security. Just imagine, a group of three L students, who, who will be willing to look after them? Well, do we, do we only leave them to the market mechanism and leave them to the fate? I don't know how members feel. I also have a son who have, who has special education needs. Whenever I think of my son, I can think of my own students as well. So we're all born equal. We all have families, we all have our alma mater. I'm very proud of my own alma mater. But just imagine, why is it that these students might lose their schools? I hope members also think about this. Next, we have Mr. Lo Wenbiu from the Kock Yip Yai College. Good morning, Chairman. Hong Kong is renowned as a cosmopolitan city with a huge financial reserve or fiscal reserve. We have a size of one thousand one hundred square kilometers and a population of more than seven million. Without natural resources, we can, we're able to have sustainable development because of our talents. Education is the only thing that can help Hong Kong to continue to prosper. And this is why I believe, when the CE appointed Mr. Ng as the new Secretary of Education, I believe he did so because you are an expert in human resources, you would realize that nurturing talent is essential for the sustainable development of our society. In order to enhance the quality of education, the bureau has done a lot of work. In two thousand and four, you selected forty primary schools as a, as a pilot to operate class, classes with twenty-five students. In oh eight, oh nine, more primary schools also operated on a basis of class size of twenty-five. Don't forget that in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, these students will move on to S one. For students, you know, studying in the, in the classes of, with a class size of twenty-five, can they really, you know, learn effectively in a class with a size of forty students? The three-two-one proposal is aimed at enabling the students to learn how to teach on the basis of a much smaller class size. With a declining population, in two thousand and eleven, we started the voluntary, you know, you know, class enhancement scheme. Instead of operating five classes, we reduced the number of classes from five to four, to allow more room for the students. But there's no enhancement as well as the content of teaching is concerned. The three-two-one proposal will enable the students to, to, to receive much richer, enhance quality of education. If we reduce the number of students going, the number of band one students, there will be fewer people who have the opportunity to move to, to be admitted to those schools. You have a mismatch because of that. Does it mean that, that, you know, talented students will not benefit from a small class, class teaching? Finally, I had to sum up according to experts. Bill Clinton, during his, after his eight-year term expired, people asked him what, what his biggest achievement. He said his biggest contribution was to reduce the class size to less than twenty. Tony Blair also claimed that education was his only significant achievement during his tenure. So I hope that you, the bureau accepted the three-two-one proposal is the best solution to a problem. Chairman and Mr. Secretary, I'd like to make a comment regarding investment in education. Starting from the nineteen sixties, economists who specialized in economic development found that economic development is, does not depend on land and natural resources, as well as financial capital and the size of the labor force. More importantly, it depended on the quality of the labor force. As a result, they developed the so-called hu- human capital theory. Many educationalists and experts have pointed out that whatever the place, the time, and I think very often the return on capital investment, on education investment is more than ten percent. Investment in fundamental education has a higher return than tertiary education. If you invest in a lower income groups, the return on education is higher than those if you invest on the richer families. Although by, after the trough in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, the student population for secondary education will go up. However, the population, aging population, aging population problem will persist. We can foresee that the adolescents in schools now, when they, you know, you know, you know, leave school and have a career, they'll need to be more productive in order to sustain a heavier, you know, economic responsibility. Let us not forget that the graduates of the STE will not all go to universities. The six-year general education they receive in secondary schools, it represents a golden period for them to receive education. So what we, can we do for the next generation? We have to grasp the opportunity of our declining population to enhance the education environment, enhance the quality of education, so that we can improve on the productivity and the competitiveness of our next generation. We're not asking the government to drastically increase its investment in education. We just want to reduce the number of students assigned to each class, so that we can enhance the, the classroom environment. It would only increase the unit cost of education. According to the media's statistics, over the last five years, the per-unit cost per secondary students increased from thirty-three to forty-one thousand. If you take away the effect of inflation, the actual increase is minimal. Compared with the international schools, the ESF, and some of the direct subsidy schools, a unit cost of forty thousand dollars per student is not much. We all know that the subsidized schools are the place where the majority of students receive their education. One-third or even half of our students are on CSSA, or they are fully subsidized for their tuition fees. I'd like to reiterate what those scholars have said. If the government is willing to commit more resources on primary basic education, I think we can, you can be ensured that there will be a more than ten percent return on the investment on education, far much better than the return on our MPF contribution. I'd like to urge members and the officials to, when dealing with the problem of a declining population, make a wise decision and, and, and ensure that we have, you know, sufficient investment education. Chairman, the topic of my talk today is to, you know, leave the school to do its work and help Hong Kong build its talents. Chairman, there were more than a hundred students, a hundred people attended the hearing yesterday, and that's why you have to limit each of us to only two minutes. And then Ms. Sit Ho suggested that we should allow, be, allow more time in order to have better communication. And finally, the chairman agreed to adjust the time for, it, it shows that quality is more important than resource deployment. So as far as education is concerned, I believe that, that the same So as far as education is concerned, I believe that the same logic applies. The Bureau pointed out that as the decline in student population is only a temporary phenomenon, by two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, the population will go up again. For how many years we have to wait before the population goes up again? We talked about three to four years. Three or four years, the population will go down. Another three or four years, the student population will go up again. A total of seven periods, seven years. During these seven and eight years, at least half of the schools in Hong Kong will have to consider other ways to ensure that they will recruit a sufficient number of students. As a result, the, we will, we will be made less focused on educating our students. The Bureau proposed to retain the schools and the teachers. But I'd like the Bureau to consider further this. To keep the number, retaining schools doesn't mean they're retaining the number of students. You have to maintain the quality of students. If you retain the schools and they only have twelve classes and a hundred-odd students, what kind of school would that be? Would you consider, we think about these hundred fifty-six students, how would they feel if they go to a school like that? The education experts say that we shouldn't label the students. If you do not cut down on the number of, you know, students in a class, many schools will have to cut down the class, the number of classes or even, you know, vanish. It's good for the Bureau to support the schools. But apparently, our policy now, on the one hand, is creating the so-called weak schools. So that our schools, which normally take, operate four classes, will now have to operate two and those who have three classes will have to handle two. After you've created these so-called weak schools, you have to support them. Isn't there a contradiction there? So I think if the Bureau does not accept the three-to-one proposal put forward by the school principals, the number of these weak schools will definitely increase. If members do not believe that, please ask the Bureau whether or not I estimate it's accurate. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mr. Chen Fong Man. Good morning, Chairman, members. I am here to represent the parents. I am not as eloquent as other reputations are, but I'd just like to say something from the point of view of the parents, in particular regarding Kaolin City. In Kaolin City, there are forty-five primary schools, thirty-three government schools and two private, ten subsidized. And there are five DSS schools, one providing senior secondary school. There are over twenty-nine government schools. In primary schools, they have started the small-class teaching in Kaolin City. These figures show that there is a lack of secondary school places, but the parents are prepared to work with the administration. I've got three kids, in primary, in kindergarten, and also in secondary. And I am struggling together with the administration. I hope that you would spare some thoughts for the parents. In two thousand and eleven, since the volunteer optimization scheme was introduced, the Kaolin City saw a reduction in classes in some favorite schools. When the results were released, I received a phone call from parents who were very, very anxious. The parents were in a state of anxiety. There is a keen competition for the school places. Now, in their random allocation system, they've got no idea where they will be sent to. In Kaolin City, I've visited the secondary school of my daughter to give her the book list. There are so many parents knocking on the door. Each school would receive one hundred, two hundred applications or ad hoc applications, but they can't take them all. We don't really want to see the removal of these ad hoc applications. For some parents, if they are well-off enough, they don't really want to be part of this SSPA system. They would go to DSS schools and they may go to DSS schools outside Kaolin City. And some traditional English medium schools have been converted into DSS schools. The more well-off you are, the more opportunities you have. As we move up, there would be more mismatch. Those who are not sufficiently well-off will have to be stuck with the SSPA. We really want a good learning environment for the students. We are receptive to different views. We're not really against anything at all, but we just find it very difficult to support. Ms. Lau Sa Yin.
Good morning. The decline in secondary student population has grave implications. Now, this is really a disaster for the education sector. In the past couple of days, we've heard so many principals. I don't want to repeat them. Let me give you an analogy as a portrayal of the current situation. There is a tidal wave hitting the education sector, but the Education Bureau told us that, don't worry, we've got so many measures, you're not going to be killed. Maybe five schools are likely to meet with their demise. Why five? May I ask the Education Bureau? Even if the schools can survive, they will be crippled. They will be heavily, heavily wounded. Now, with this tidal wave on the way, why are we going to foresee the casualties? Why don't we do something to divert the waves or to mitigate the impact of the tidal waves? The three-to-one proposal, this upward and downward adjustment proposal is just the measure to mitigate the impact of this tidal wave. We don't really want to see schools that are mortally wounded. I believe they are mortally wounded. The Education Bureau might apply some palliative measures to keep you alive. But we don't want that, we want them to come away from it and escape. This proposal has been around for so long and the government has been stalling. On the twenty-second, there was supposed to be a meeting to be held. We haven't heard anything from the administration. Now, we stated, they stated the parents' anxieties and the ratio of difference district distribution. All these arguments do not have a leg to stand on. Some parents proposed to the administration that we should explain to the parents together. As long as the Bureau can paint a good enough picture for the parents, then we would understand that we are talking about a short-term upward and downward adjustment model. It is moderate term model. In the light of the population changes, I hope that the secretary will exercise a wise choice. We are talking about tens of thousands of people who are going to be affected. I'm sure that they will side with us. The principals are moderate people, we're not radical people. But when the tidal wave are hitting us, I cannot say for sure what's going to happen. There are so many people in the sector who should stand up and be counted. Finally, may I be seated with members to fight for this long-term model? We just talked about the short term. In the long term, there should be a change in the class size and the manpower and so on. This has been stored by the administration for so long. Right next, SKH Lam Kaum Maos Secondary School. Good morning, Chairman, fellow colleagues. I'd like to talk about the pressure on teachers and the pressure on students. I'd like to state the aspirations of the teachers and principals in these three-to-one proposal. We've seen cataclysmic changes over the years in the education sector, the curriculum, the academic structure, medium of instruction. The teachers and schools have been trying to get acclimatized to the situation. They identify the talents and help take remedial measures for the less academically gifted. We take care of every single one to enable them to add value to themselves. This is very much a challenge. Most of the schools will have to struggle given the current tight resources, they speed up their classes. In my school, for instance, we've sped up the five classes to seven groups. We have remedial classes. Three years ago, because of the NSS academic structure, we have split the five classes into six groups, thirty-three students each class. We started the medium class teaching. While the Education Bureau has directives for the liberal studies, there is, there are no assistance for the core subjects. Now, for these small group settings, the teachers have been given an additional two or three classes or lessons. But the teachers are happy to play along with this. Now, as some students are becoming more diverse in abilities, if we keep the thirty-eight to forty class size, it will be very difficult for us to upgrade the quality and look after the abilities of the students. Three years on, the policies, what are the policies? What are the situations like? The teachers have been dealt a severe blow. We have five or half a dozen half-time or part-time students not because there are no places, no posts for them. They chose a part-time work because they want more time to do a good job. They experienced the teachers. For us to lose these valuable assets, I feel really heartbroken. Given the decline in student population, we should seize the opportunity to cut down on the size of the classes. The mismatch problem is beginning to emerge in terms of academic results, in terms of the development of the students. We're beginning to see all these problems. Previously, all the senior classes suffered from pressure. Now, the pressure has come down to lower classes. Those who are less academically endowed, they are very much left to their own devices, find it difficult to keep up. All right, next, Mr. Young Ho Hoi.
I hope that the administration will accept the Coalition's proposal. The eighteen associations and nine councils have put forward this proposal. If you stall this, it will not be good for anybody at all. The improvement of the NSS curriculum means that, like chemistry subject, if you have a class size of forty, it will be very difficult to cope in an experiment lesson. Would it be safe, even if thirty are involved in an experiment? You still have to be worried about it. Now, you can, you can give me a score after my speech. You have to bear in mind the pressure on these teachers. Thirty class size, a class size of thirty is not a big ask. It is a mild request. Why don't you do it? Last night, I asked my daughter, who was a P five student in two thousand and eight. There are five thousand students in P one. The class size is reduced to thirty-four. And that problem will be improved, thirty-eight down to thirty-four. Two thousand and thirteen, there'll be less, five thousand students less. How are we going to resolve this problem? A P five student would say that you cut four, bring the total to thirty. In two thousand and thirteen, with a reduction of five thousand, why can't we reduce the class size by four? Now, the number of students will be reduced by eleven thousand. How many classes are we going to be reduced? Let's assume that it is four hundred. According to the administration, they will take away four classes. Or is it the case that if they are down to one class, they can keep the school? Now, when they lose all these classes, and do you keep one class secondary school or are you going to make them disappear? The other problem is that in two thousand and sixteen, we have to look at the oh oh six stroke two oh oh nine circular. That's about the fine-tuning the medium of instruction, one-six, one-seven, the qualified eligible students. If there is a reduction of one-third, then there will be a reduction of one-third of the English medium classes. Let's say there is a reduction of two hundred and fifty classes. Those English medium instruction schools, how many will be affected? If I've got something wrong, please, I stand to correct it.
My next, Mr. Yip Chee Tim. Chairman, thank you. I'm really glad to have the opportunity today. I didn't mean to come here, but after listening to yesterday's meeting, I feel obligated to come. I'm on behalf of the Kaolin City Principals Liaison Committee. We don't suffer any pressure of school closure. But in the education sector, we are suffering from this dilemma. We have to pull together, we have to pull in the same direction. There should be a flexible adjustment of the class sizes so that we can bring in the three-to-one model. I hope that in the spirit of harmony, we will help the education sector. Yesterday, I read the ad from the Education Bureau, which purports to protect the school, protect the school places and the teaching posts. But I don't think we have got the focus right. We're not trying to keep jobs, we have to keep the quality of education. That you're telling people that because you want to keep the jobs, the number will have to be cut. And this is wrong and this will put parents on the collision course with the schools. And this would be detrimental to quality education. Now, the government has introduced the liberal studies to improve critical thinking. Now, to protect the schools, to protect the school places, basically, they are effectively talking about closing the schools. In the coming four years, there will be eleven thousand students, less, equivalent to one hundred schools. But next year, the government will reduce, remove five classes. Now, you have to, you have to consider the karma, the karmic fate that will be before you. Now, also, the retirement scheme, seven hundred and fifty, it is anticipated that teachers for three hundred and fifty classes will have their jobs at stake. If you don't close the schools, why do we have so many surplus teachers? I don't think you're protecting jobs, you are getting rid of the teachers. Now, before execution, one will be given a sumptuous meal. And that's the analogy I'd like to give you. In the coming years, how many teachers are you going to be eliminated? Third, with school closure, we're going to see a mismatch. And I think that you are trying to undermine the abilities of the schools. This is the beginning of a despotic rule. How are you going to resolve this mismatch problem? May I finish my speech? Ten seconds, please. Mr. Michael Soon used to be very receptive. The whole team, the permanent secretary, the entire team would be here. But today, it is down to the secretary being on his own without any other colleagues with him.
I'm Shang Ai. Chairman, members. First of all, I support the eighteen district principal association's statement and their requests for the administration. I've got two points to share with you. First of all, I very much hope in terms of unit costs and between unit costs and investment costs, there should be a balance to be struck. When I was a little kid, I heard this term, teachers. Now, if you go back to the seventies, there were so many, that, I mean, the unit cost was zero at that time. And today, we have voluntary education, we're moving forward. Our ancestors had the foresight to make investment. I don't think unit costs should be adopted to work out the formula. We have to do a good job. The education sector is proposing quality voluntary education. And for this to happen, we do need some rules.
And for this to happen, we do need some room. The N S S curriculum, the D S E is a case in point. The D S E has been put off successfully because the former secretary, Mr. Michael Soon, did talk with the sector. And we were given the optimization program, and that contributed to a stable situation. And also, the teachers, the principals, the students are also pulling in the same direction. And they've done so much, they've done tremendous amount of work in this D S E. We've seen two hundred or so principals coming here. They are all prepared to work with the Education Bureau to optimize the education system because we can achieve a sense of fulfillment here. I hope that the secretary will listen to the views of the Coalition. We're not trying to keep our jobs. We're not really talking about small class teaching. What we are seeking to do is quality education. In terms of sense of fulfillment, I feel that we can do a lot of work for the students. So, all students, band one to band three. We have to make sure that they will upgrade themselves, they will able to achieve improvements. We should achieve education for all. We have to look after every single one. I have a dream. This is not the end of the sentence. So many principals come to here and talk with the secretaries and the fellow colleagues to achieve quality education in secondary schools. I would like to leave a good episode for the younger generation.
Mr. She Hong Sam. Well, when we met for, when people meet for a meal and someone leaves, of course, you will clear away the dishes he used. But then, if a whole group go to the washroom together, you will not ask the waiter to clear away the dishes because we know these people are coming back for the meal. So, we are trying to help the secretary to solve the problems here. I'm going to make use of the data, the information in hand. The problem is not difficult to solve, not when we know there will be a rebound in population in seventeen and eighteen. Now, this problem is not hard to solve. Next year, there will be a fall in the student population. It's similar to oh-eight and oh-nine. We're talking about a smaller amount of money on Form One education. So, it's not worthwhile for us to spend so much time to discuss it as long as you adopt the three-two-one package. For heavy machinery, once it runs smoothly, you should simply switch off the machine because otherwise, you are going to do damage to the machine. So, if you're going to close down schools and open them again, a lot of calls will be involved. You know a lot about human resources, secretary. And you know that we cannot afford to lose one more school. Yesterday, we talked about the students who underwent school closure. And these students often are left with this sense of helplessness. Now, these primary school students are moving on to secondary level. Are they going to be left with these same feelings? Next, Mr. Ho Chi Ping from Federation of ETA Taipu District. Secretary, lawmakers, and educators, good morning. I'm here to represent my district. In fact, my written submission has already been submitted to the secretariat. Now, I have to make it clear, I'm not in the education sector, so there's no conflict of interest on my part. I want to stress one point. That is, we do have a problem of mismatch of student and schools. In my district, I have received lots of calls from parents asking us to help their children to be allocated to other schools to study. If we push some students to band one schools and they cannot cope with the situation there, it's difficult for them to be allocated to other band schools. If they are left in band one schools, they will always be at the bottom down the line. It's torture for them. That's why I think we should balance the number of classes in band one, two, three schools. That's why I support the decision made by Principals Association in Taipu District. And I also support the three-two-one proposal. Next, Buddhist Wong Wen Tin College, Mr. Kock, the principal. When I came in earlier, I was told that because I'm the last deputation to speak, I should summarize what's been said. But then, I'm not very good at summarizing. I'm sure the chairman, lawmakers, and the secretary are in a better position than myself in this regard. I have to say a few words, however. For the past two few days, we hear about killing and closures, et cetera, et cetera. It's a bloody scene. On the other hand, educators talk about being united together, to ride out the difficult time and to work for a better future for our students. Now, lawmaker, secretary, please, think about this. You do not have a lot of, you do not have a long life. Policies are dictated by your thinking. I'm sure you agree, education is here to cultivate talents, to develop talents, and to upgrade the intelligence of our citizens. And this is an important mission for us. And the results cannot be seen immediately, not in the education field. And you cannot deal with the problems here by closing down schools and cutting class sizes. We should provide quality education to our students. In fact, I don't think there is a bending division in the sector. Maybe we take in band three students, but then our teachers are of the top bending. So, that's why I say there is no division of bending. Parents incoming to choosing schools, I think it's best for them to choose a school suitable for their children. Over the past few days, I've heard a lot from my fellow colleagues. I'm here to state, to stress that the three-two-one proposal proposed by us is a simple measure, as said by Mr. She. I hope the secretary will consider it. This is a simple proposal to stabilize the situation, the scene, and to upgrade the education environment. Why don't you adopt it? I have expectations for the secretary. As soon as I knew Mr. Ng is going to be a secretary, I think he is someone with vision because I've heard him speak on many occasions. Why are you performing like this? Is it because of these problems? It's fine. Is it because of the national education issue? It doesn't matter. Just share what you think with us. All right, well, thank you. Deputations. Secretary, can you respond to what's been, the points made by the deputations? Thank you, Chairman and Principals. Thank you for the views expressed. I have a lot of feelings. I want to bring up several points. First, I'm sorry, the Permanent Secretary is otherwise engaged. We have representative from seventy universities from the mainland here. That's why the Permanent Secretary is otherwise engaged. They are here to, for Hong Kong students applying for university places on the mainland. So, they also have a busy schedule. They're very busy for these past few days. I have to stress, the Permanent Secretary would very much like to come. And if he or she has done, is done with the task, then he or she will come to join us. Second point, I'm very glad to have these meetings in the past few days. We have to keep our teaching post, the strength, and the schools. We cannot build up team spirit in just one or two days. Now, we're talking about keeping schools. We're trying to make adjustment to the numbers so that we can be more flexible in class numbers. It seems that in saying keeping teaching posts, we're being, we're looking at it from the administrative point of view. But what we mean is, we want to minimize the impact on teachers. This is what we want to do. Third point, I would like to listen to more reducing class size. I never said we would not consider it. I remember in October, we had several meetings just to talk about it. We will explore this issue. For learning difference, this is a new issue for us. In the past few years, we see this problem and we think we have to look at this issue. And in the coming five years, we will particularly look at the learning difference. It cannot be dealt with by adjustment to class size. And we have to deal with this problem as soon as possible. What I have to supplement, this is what I have to supplement. All right, we'll go to the Q and A session. Please pause there. I want to know who would like to speak. Please raise your hand. And I'll decide on the time for each speaker after I know that. All right, eight, is it right? Mr. Wong Yook Man, you too? All right, nine then. In that case, may I propose four minutes for Q and A for each lawmaker, one more minute than yesterday, all right? If yes, then let's stick to this rule. If you have any direct or indirect conflict of interest, monetary conflict of interest, please review such a conflict before you speak. First of all, I would like to thank the teachers, educators, principals, and parents, as well as members of the public who are concerned with education for coming to Latch Co. to share with us your difficulties, your vision. Also, from the education sector, I teach at universities. Maybe you already know that. That's why I'm also very much concerned with the issues here. This is a quality discussion. I'm sure you agree with that. Maybe it's because it's not politicized. We focus on education, so we have a quality discussion here. I hope the Bureau, especially the secretary, will consider the points. I think the deadline is the twenty-second of November. You have a meeting on that day. How many days do we left? The secretary says you consider it. So, you haven't said whether you will or will not do that. So, we are left with uncertainties. That's why people are feeling anxious. I do understand it. But then, if you're a principal, if you're a teacher or teachers who may be eligible for the early retirement scheme, you will feel very anxious. And that's for the parents as well. We do not know who caused this problem. But then, we know who is going to solve the problem. That is the Bureau. Well, our chief secretary, chief executive keeps saying he and his team. But then, for the E D B, your teammate is not here. Why? It's so strange. Well, secretary, you've heard the views expressed today and yesterday. Every time when someone from the education institution is here, then they are well-prepared. They mention a small class teaching analysis or study center. They mentioned two professors in the center who gave data based on the situation in Hong Kong to show us there is a need in Hong Kong to roll out small class teaching, which will pose positive impact on the education scene. So, secretary, please look at the scene, the local scene, instead of the international scene, and take us through these detour. So, secretary, do you think this study is not worthwhile for you to look at? On methods, well, you keep talking about data in Asia. What about in Europe? When can you supply us with that? Third point, resources. Principals mentioned, you do not have to put in extra resources with the three-two-one proposal and gradual change to small class teaching. You can do that with extra resources. Maybe we'll have five schools being closed down. What about three years down the road? What will happen? Four questions for your secretary. I have just a very short time. We know about the study of the HKIE. Your associate professor mentioned it on the newspapers today. At present, they look at the primary school level. They're still looking at the final results. So, there is no definite conclusion. They are looking at the primary level, but not the secondary level. On Friday, I remember Hong Kong, you were, maybe you can come back to it later. Mr. Priscilla Leng, Fanny Leng, and and also Paul She. Apart from asking the secretary questions, you can also post questions to the deputations. Ms. Priscilla Leng. First of all, I would like to thank the representatives from the education sector for sharing your significant views with us. On school closure, we've had so many discussions with the chief executives and the Bureau. My own primary was closed down. Even after donation, Fresh Fish Market Primary School survives because of its own effort. And they have a very good principal there. Now, the tide is here on the secondary level. It poses great impact on the teachers especially. I remember when we discussed with Mr. Xuan Ming Yang, we raised the fact that once teachers leave, they will not come back to the sector. So, I don't think this is the right direction for us, especially when we do not know how many children will come back to Hong Kong to study. We should keep the schools, and we have a good opportunity ahead. I've visited lots of primary schools, and I see positive changes when they switch to, after they've switched to small class teaching. On primary, secondary school level, of course, lots of students would like to get to elite schools. But it's not suitable for every student. Some students may come at the top in primary level, but then, in elite schools, they come at the bottom. I remember this particular school which I visited. And it was good in astronomy, but then ten years down the road, it was closed down. Now, on the secondary school level, maybe what we have ahead is a, is an opportunity. How we can have four minutes for questions and answer? Do you want to ask any questions, Madame Leng? Yes. So now, Secretary, we hope we can seize the day to come up with high schools with characteristics and also to keep those committed teachers in the future. Children born in Hong Kong make, um, who go back to the mainland may come back to study. So what are your views? Secretary, please. Our priority is to keep the schools. We try to lower chances of school closure. We really don't want to see school closure. So we try to relax the number of students required to start classes. Now, within the now how we can maintain education quality and in keeping the teaching post? We would, we want to do more on that. Next, Mr. Leng Yucheng. I would like to thank all the deputations here to share your views with us. And Chair, thank you for reminding me to declare in conflict of interest. If a school closes down, then I will lose my job because I also teach at uni, a high school. Now, I understand that we have the learning difference and this will pose pressure on our frontline teachers. That's why I asked the Secretary about small class teaching yesterday. You said it's not, you said you have to look at the whole picture, which involves lots of factors. Now, when I listened to you today, you add more points to this issue. You said you will talk with those in the sector. You said you will explore it. You use the word explore. So what do you have to explore? What difficulties do you see in rolling of small class teaching? What difficulties do you see which store small class teaching? Because today, yesterday, or even earlier on, Latch Co. insists this is the principle in education, that is to have small class teaching. It will upgrade our education quality and it will also enhance teacher-student relationship. So Secretary, please tell us, how much time do you need to explore this issue? What I'm worried most is about this study on, by the Hong Kong IE. They are looking at the primary school level. So how long do you need for this exploration? So Chairman, please help me out here. The Secretary has a little more than a minute. Tell us when the small class teaching will be rolled out?
For small class teaching, we are talking about two aspects. Over the last couple of months, we've been talking about small class and then other people have been talking about small class teaching. Several primary schools have restarted the pilot scheme on small class teaching and we are also analyzing the results. Because such a drastic change on teaching and learning, we need to really grasp the focus. And I, I understand, I am aware of that research center. I know what's, uh, what they've been doing. But I think they're still discussing the final, uh, Secretary. So you wouldn't be able to make a decision regarding small class teaching before the summer vacation. I really, I tell the importance to this issue. I've told the Deputy Chairman that, that I hope that for the next few years, I think the focus of the panel should be exactly on this topic. So Secretary, are you saying that you will not promise? Mr. Leng, why don't you let him finish? I think he has already answered my question, but you're not satisfied with the answer? Well, I think he has answered my question. He said that in future, the panel will focus its attention on studying the issue of small class teaching. Secretary, I think my time is almost up. Secretary.
Well, the school principals refer to the three-to-one, two-on-one and one-on-one proposal. Such discussions, we hope, will be able to, uh, to enable us to arrive at a consensus in next few weeks. Next, Sitou. Thank you. I'd like to thank the school principals and the parent representatives and the students from the Institute of Education for coming here to give us their views. I understand that many school principals were also here yesterday throughout the debate. I think the questions that you've raised, I think the education secretary, the secretary like ourselves have also listened to the hearing for four hours. We don't have very much time, the twenty-second is the deadline. We only have nineteen days left. So I give all the time to Secretary to answer the question. You've listened for more than four hours, the views of school principals. You read from newspapers about the views expressed by different people, including the different points raised by the school principal. How are you going to spend the next nineteen days to accept such views and to amend your current proposal? Chairman, don't tell, talk about retaining the schools, retaining the teachers and the string of teachers. We've heard all of that. Could you give us a specific proposal? That is, for the next nineteen days, what specifically will you do? Secretary. Next week, we will meet with the, uh, the Association of School Principals because we believe that it's very, there's a bigger chance that we will be able to arrive at a consensus. In the next few weeks, we will work hard on this. And secondly, we will discuss what we can do for the teachers. So we hope that we'll be able to arrive at some consensus. The panel will meet in mid-November. I hope there could be a more comprehensive discussion by the panel. We want to focus on the deadline of November the twenty-second and before that, we'll have time for the schools to come to decision so that they can start implement the details of the plan. I'd like to ask the Secretary whether he will just listen to our views. One school principal said, ask the Secretary whether or not he will only stop at, after he's listened to our views. Are you going to further lobby the school principals or force them to accept your present proposal? Are you willing to amend your proposal? Like other policies, we have secretaries coming forward and, and, and promise to make either minor or drastic changes. Secretary. I'd like to respect the other stakeholders. I've said we have met several opportunities in the next few days. We, we hope that we will grasp the final opportunity to arrive at the consensus. Chairman, the consensus is to impose his proposal on the school principal. Is that the case? Or is it that there, you're willing to make concessions and are willing to accept the three-to-one proposal from the school principals? I've not heard a specific answer. Secretary, what do you mean by consensus? I think we've been very clear about what the consensus is. We've, we're talking about flexible, you know, proposal where we can, you know, increase or decrease the number of students per class. And I, Chairman, I don't think the Secretary has given us a concrete answer. I just want a very simple answer, that is whether or not he will accept the proposal put forward by all the school principals. So I think we have a second part of our hearing in the afternoon. I'm sure what the principals, uh, well, you've already worked out a consensus proposal. We already have a consensus on the right-hand side. The question is whether you and you alone will accept the consensus arrived at by the two-hundred-school principals. We hope that the consensus, we will arrive at the consensus at the end of the meeting. Chairman, I don't think that is a concrete answer. Well, you may go for the second round. Mr. Ma Fengkou.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm grateful to all the deputations from the education sector. I've listened to them carefully because I want to learn more about the issues because I'm not from the same profession. I've heard many views and, and I have a few questions. I've heard a lot about how, how we're implementing your proposals. There are various benefits, for example, relieving the pressure on the teachers. And I agree that teachers now are under a lot of pressure. And you've also mentioned that it can bring stability to the schools. But I've not heard a lot of you, you know, talking about this. We're facing a window of the next three to four years, that is, there will be a decline in the student population. According to your proposal, how can we grasp the opportunity to enhance our education? I've heard something, but I've not heard some, uh, I don't know whether or not the consensus has already arrived that among the, those in the education sector. I also like to listen to the educational, education sector, how you will respond to the aspirations of the parents. That is, they would like the children to be admitted to the better schools. Of course, I don't agree that all the children, all students should aim for admission to the, the better schools. But for the school principals, how would you respond to the concerns? Mr. Ma, are you putting your question, to whom would you like to put your question? I don't know who would be the appropriate candidate to answer the question. Mr. Tai. I think in my speech earlier, I've already said that we, as principals, would very much like to improve the quality of education. We just, we do not, just want to ask for more resources. The Association of Secondary School Principals, under the leadership of a professor, uh, in, in April, organized a discussion on, uh, on, uh, self-initiated studies and six, two schools are already conducting a joint school scheme. And we hope that we could introduce such quality edu, quality teaching into Hong Kong. In the next couple of months, we already have seven groups of teachers who've gone to the institute in Guangzhou. I took the seven delegation on the twenty-seven-nine. There will be four more deputation go to Guangzhou. At that institute, I saw that, that that school in Guangzhou only has a class size of twenty-five and the performance of their students are much, very much different from ours in Hong Kong, who only listen passively in class. The message we, we got was that you should, you know, leave, give the classroom to the students and, and they can, you know, give presentations in classroom, but that would require time. So we are now working hard on this. And we hope that after this problem is resolved, the colleagues from the Bureau can work together with the Association of School Principals to, to, to improve the quality of teaching. Well, this is only a window. Two, three, four years later, we may come, revert to the present situation. How will the schools cope in that case? Chairman, I think one of the concerns of the schools is the problem of mismatch. With the drop in population, the problem is really serious. I was also discussing with other school principals why, why there is no study in small class teaching secondary schools? Because the small class teaching has never been implemented in secondary schools. I heard Mr. Lei and he gave, he asked, there are two reasons why students cannot learn effectively. First of all, because they think that what they've learned are useless. The least popular subject in school is mathematics. Uh, because when, when you go shopping, for example, your mathematical theories don't, won't, won't apply. And secondly, students find that certain things that they can simply not learn. English language is one example. If you ask students who are not capable enough and admit them to Ben Wan students, that they will not be able to cope. Just imagine that a student next, sit next to their children, if they're not up to the ability and they are forced to, to attend a Ben Wan school, then the quality of education would, 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 would be jeopardized. You think that you're, okay, I think you can further supplement in the next round. Mr. Tang Yucheng, Chairman. Having heard the, all the deputations, I'd like to, you know, express my personal opinion. I don't need the Secretary to answer my, to respond. We've heard all, many deputations yesterday and also this morning. Most who, who attended were secondary school principals and a few were representatives of the teacher-parent associations. What is special about our hearing is that more than two-hundred, you know, secondary school principals read out a statement outside the council building. This is really, uh, you know, a rare phenomenon because we rarely have deputations, you know, reading our statement or dress in, in, in formal suits outside the council building. And this shows that many secondary school principals are very concerned. When they spoke, they were really, you know, agitated, agitated and concerned. And they also, the, uh, they also referred to a consensus among the secondary school principals and they explained to us how humble and reasonable their proposal is. They've also mentioned their three-to-one proposal. And they also propose a, you know, a flexible mechanism for upward and downward adjustment, which means that we can revert to the present situation when things change in the future. They also thought, talk about the need to improve the quality of education. We are now confronted, confronted with this problem because there is, while there is some consensus between the government and the education sector. The Secretary said that he, that he does not intend to kill the schools. Instead, he want to retain the schools, to keep the schools. We also agree that, that the problem is going to be a short-term problem and since it's going to be a, a temporary problem, we have to think of a solution. For the administration, of course, you may say that they want to consider the issue from different perspectives, the long-term financial implications. Of course, they would need to consider the, the issue from, uh, more, more perspectives. But the situation in different schools are not, are different. But if so many school principals, after such deliberated discussions and have now come to a consensus, I think the Bureau should really consider them seriously. Even if these proposals may not be perfect, but since so many people are in support of this proposal, since it represents the collective wisdom of so many people. So even if it is not a hundred percent adequate, you should give it a try. Otherwise, if the Bureau come up with a different proposal behind closed doors and think that it can look after the needs of all the stakeholders, in the end, it may, when you implement what you propose, it may not work out. And there might be objections. Mr. Tang, you don't intend to ask any question? Oh, see, I already, I just want to, you know, make a, make a statement and I will stop after, when my four minutes are up. Honestly, if you force the Secretary to accept the three-to-one proposal, I, I don't think it's, it's useful. He won't tell you today that he will fully agree your proposal and that we don't even need to have the second part of, second session to this morning. That won't happen. He will still be, you know, repeating, you know, his, uh, his, you know, position. So I think a better course of action is for the, say, that you've heard all these different views. He'll go back and think about it. We have three more members, Raymond Wong, Porcher and Yip Kin Yun. Mr. Raymond Wong. Fernando Jung, you've spoken already. When have I spoken yet, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Mr. Wong. I think it's, it should be Dr. Fernando Jung first. Sorry, I think I've become invisible. Thank, I'd like to thank all the school principals, the parents and the teachers for coming to meet with us.
Thank, I'd like to thank all the school principals, the parents, and the teachers for coming to meet with us. Yesterday, I've already said that, you know, retaining the schools, the teachers, and so on. I think we are putting the, the focus on the wrong place. I think we should be, you know, preserving and retaining education in our next, next generation. And I think the, those present, the deputations are also talking about the same thing. What we are now faced with is a short-term problem. That is, the, the decline in the, in the size of the, in the number of secondary school students. And as a result, we need to, you know, reduce the class size. It is it is really no small achievement that the education profession can come to a consensus. I don't have a lot of expectations of the Education Bureau. I'm a teacher myself, but I specialize in special education because my kid also study in such a school, and I'm also very concerned about integrated education. The Education Bureau always adopt an accounting mentality in treating, looking at education. They will look at the cost and they'll do the sums. They would adopt a mentality similar to that of the Treasury Department. I'm sure the secretary is a conscientious person, but I don't think he would have imagined that once he took up his office, he would be confronted with such all these serious problems. And the scale of the problem is not, no, is not small either. We saw everyone coming yesterday who spoke with a united voice, and and they're not troublemakers like ourselves. For the school principals to come forward to confront the administration is really, you know, a rare phenomenon, as if the sun is rising from the west. But our administration really can, really do the impossible. Many people who have never considered, thought that they would come forward and take part in confrontation activities have now done that. I don't have any question for the secretary, but I believe that with this imminent short-term problem, you have to find a solution to the problem. No matter how, even if the support units have this accounting mentality, I think in the end, you have to find a consensus. But I, I'm worried that the consensus will be focused on the, the, the monetary aspect. And then you will come up with a compromise solution. And I'm also worried that the bureau will adopt a divide-and-rule tactic, would stigmatize certain stakeholders. It's like those mentally, those who have mental problems who will not be, who will deny the opportunity of schooling after the age of eighteen. The bureau very much would like to put the pressure on individual schools and ask them to deal with their own problem, and leave them to compete among themselves, and they're most, they would very much like to, you know, they like, you know, school-based approach, and they would like to leave the market to determine, to find a solution to, to issues.
So I urge the education sector to stand united. And I also hope that you would get across this message to the parents and the students. And in the process, they should get a better understanding of the situation. That would certainly be good for everybody all around. Mr. Wong Yock Man. When the principals meet the secretary, when the teachers meet the government officials, when the students, or when the student-based education is pitched against this system, the stakeholders will stand to lose. We've got so many principals coming here with very much a consensus. The consensus that they have forged is unable to match the decision of the Secretary for Education, because your decision can be overriding. You can override, overrule the, the consensus of the educationalists. We've seen so many submissions. We've heard the principals. I'm not prepared to comment on them. Some criticize those who are critical of the government for being populist. I don't think the principals, hundreds of principals are being populist. They present high-quality views. If you're so bureaucratic towards these principles, and I think you're really insulting them. You really have to put on your thinking cap. You have to mull over their views instead of just treating what they said as nonsense. On the fourteenth of November, I'm going to move a motion of no confidence regarding two principal officials. You are one of them, I said. This motion, given the predominance of the establishment camp here, will be rejected, but the process is more important than anything. The government has got some benevolent initiatives, like the O A L A. It, it was, I mean, it ended up being a bad initiative, because it tear up the, it tears up the social fabric. It tears up the, the fabric of the council. This is presented to us and, and expected us to endorse it within a, a week or so. Will you come back to this subject, please? Mr. Long Kuo-Hung, it's not your turn to speak. Mr. Wong, please. When the benevolent initiatives turned into evil initiatives. You have this BSD, the, the biased stamp duty, and we ended up with Franklin Lam. And in education, you have the national education, and you ended up with all these oppositions. Now you're trying to address the decline in student population, and you have all these measures, and you have incurred wrath from the principals, and you're insulting the principals. What I said is relevant. You know me, Chairman. I have specific, we've heard so many specific comments these two days. The secondary principals are more, far more civilized. I'm more like a thug, and I mean, they, they are, they are civilized people, and they are protesting. They've got so much work on their plate. This kind of confrontation is very powerful. If you go on like this, the way you are, you look at the consequences. On the fourteenth of November, I'm going to vote, cast a vote of no confidence in you. Mr. Por Che.
Well, Mr. Wong, I said that he's insulting the, the civilized, but I, I get this feeling for a long time, over the past four years. I'm grateful to the deputations for coming here, and I think it's worth listening to what they have to say. Recently, we have a lot of passionate deputations, and it's rare for us to have passionate people who can speak, who can talk sense. They all said that the principals are busy people, hardly ever would they take to the street in protest. Hong Kong did have a situation where people took to the street, those who otherwise would not take to the street. And that, that was the time when we had the interpretation of the basic, or a lot of illegal professions took to the street. If we bring out the people onto the street who otherwise wouldn't be there, the government should be concerned about the problem. Now, this is no ordinary matter. There are so many principals and educationalists who are coming out in the public domain and, and confront the administration. Now, you may need to look at the budget. You may need to look at the policy considerations. And therefore, you have some reservations. But in Hong Kong, we're moving a democratic society. And, and you have to mull over all these points, because this can easily turn into an other crisis. So if you have learned from previous experience, you should be wise enough not to corner them, because at the end of the day, you may have to withdraw the whole proposal, and you, you, you wouldn't be prepared to admit that, that has been withdrawn, withdrawn. I'd like to highlight a couple of points. I may not need a response from the secretary. I'm going to exhaust the four minutes that I have at my disposal. I am not from the education sector. I haven't got much experience here, so I don't think I would be able to share with you any of my experience, but I'm sure everyone of us has been students. In terms of small-class teaching, I've got a slightly different view. In secondary school, we never tried small-class teaching. Some studies show that it is very effective at primary level. In secondary, there is a question mark over that. In universities, because of the different level, I, I'm not talking about tutorials. If you reduce the class size for lectures and so on, would it be a good way to go? I'm not sure about secondary schools, now there are so many celebrity tutors in Hong Kong, even if they, they are attending the, the lessons through television, they, they would be happy about them. The education sector, the principals, the schools, the, the parents' associations, they stand united. They, they show solidarity and supported this three-to-one proposal. I haven't heard from today or yesterday's deputations, any other proposals. Is it the case that your own wisdom, Mr. Secretary, will be enough to pit against all these wisdom of other people? Now, we are talking about political wisdom here. We have objections to, I don't think we have heard any objections to the three-to-one proposal. And I think this is the time we reveal the situation. Mr. Yip Kin Yun.
Now, once again, my thanks to my fellow colleagues and also the students for coming here. This is a rare opportunity. And I'm also grateful to my fellow councillors for being here and for convening this particular special meeting. I think this has highlighted the importance and urgency of the matter. If possible, maybe at the next meeting, I'd like to make this an agenda item for the next meeting. I am going to move a motion here. And I have my fellow councillors, I will support it. The urgency and the importance of the matter mean that the secretary has to consider this matter as a matter of priority. We talked about political wisdom. I think we also have to, to have historical wisdom. The entire education system will be at stake, will it hinges on the, the single decision of, of the secretary. If you take a wrong decision at this juncture, then the implications, the consequences will be very dire. I mean, we, we will be, we will be judged by, by the younger generation. Mr. Por Che talked about these studies on small-class teaching. The, the P T U, Professional Teachers Association, suggested that the class size should be reduced to thirty, and then we can bridge with the, the primary, which has a class size of twenty-five. Now, any proposals that are floated can be a starting point for discussion. Why thirty? Now, this is more aggressive than the principal's proposal, which is more moderate. And that, that doesn't resolve all the problems. Given the three-to-one proposal, the administration doesn't really want to address it with all seriousness. They, they can't tell us today whether they will be prepared to accept it. What, what factors are you, are you considering? What, what problems do you have in mind? In terms of small-class teaching, there are a couple of points I'd like to highlight. First of all, the bureau's considerations do have a lot of wrong assumptions. Now, they said the small-class teaching is just a form of paternity. This is not a form of paternity. We are optimizing the environment. We are making things more flexible. Have you got any studies? Now, indeed, there are some, some studies. We have empirical studies. Gary Griffith conducted some empirical studies at Hong Kong U. And this is one of the most systematic studies ever found in Hong Kong. I'm not sure whether the bureau has studied that, find, these findings. Now, if we don't resolve these problems satisfactorily, the consequences can be dire. As some fellow councillors said, I'm not so sure what we're letting ourselves in for going forward. Now, we have to keep the schools, keep the, the teaching posts, keep the quality. All these principles are coming out and, and face up to, to history. And I'm sure if the problem is serious enough, the whole community might be mobilized to, to turn out into the street. Right, on this note, I'd like to announce that this segment will come to an end. If you have further information, welcome to submit it in writing. Thank you very much for coming.